He's gone.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call a February 4th meeting of the Common Council to order. I will ask our clerk to call a roll.
Alderman Barzak.
Here.
Shaplesky.
Here.
Haas.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
May.
Here.
Ranky.
Here.
Brodt.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Vitale.
Hi.
And Weigle.
Here.
That's 10 present.
We have a quorum. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Legions, which will be led this evening by Alderman Barzak.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move on to item D on our agenda, as we have two items for public hearing this evening. I will ask the clerk to read item number one.
Resolution to confirm and adopt the report of the city engineer containing the schedule of proposed assessments for improvement of West Euclid Avenue from South Villa Cross...
Circle.
Circle. It'd be CI then, not CL. To South 119th Street and West Lakefield Avenue from South 122nd Street to east of South 119th Street by concrete reconstruction, driveway repair, storm sewer, storm sewer relay, sanitary sewer relay, water main relay, building services, utility adjustments, and storm under drain.
Mr. Daniels.
Thank you, Mayor Devine. Okay, this is the public hearing for Lakefield Drive and Euclid Avenue. Here's the procedures for tonight. I'll discuss the project's scope and cost. I'll talk about assessment rates, methods of payment. Then we'll have comments and questions from the council, then from the citizens affected. Then the Public Works Committee will take this up later tonight and possibly come back here later, later tonight for final decision. So here, we're talking about Lakefield Drive. We are not actually doing 119th Street, so we're actually going to jump over the top of the traffic circle there, but we are doing this entire section of Lakefield Drive. And then we are doing Euclid. We're not actually going out into 119th. That's typo, but we are doing this portion of Euclid from Villa to 119th. Here's some pictures of Lakefield Drive. This was paved in 1961, so it's 59 years old. Usually you expect a concrete street to last about 50 years, so everyone's gotten their money's worth here. It's lasted 59. There's way too many potholes to even try filling anymore. Here's some more pictures. It's become very severely deteriorated. And Euclid as well has deteriorated very extensively. We did do soil borings and ground penetrating radar several years ago. There's a lot of voids under this pavement. There's some bad soils. So these streets are not candidates for resurfacing. We need to start over with a fresh base and fresh concrete. We're also doing some of the sewer work. We're going to put in some new storm sewer and laterals to all the properties. A lot of storm sewer was not put in in 1961 on Lakefield. The existing storm sewer on Euclid is going to remain. We are putting a new sanitary sewer as well on both streets because there are some cracks and problems. But the water main on both streets will remain from 1961. There aren't any problems with that. And then you did all get LED streetlights in 2016, so those will remain as well. We did do some traffic counts out there. We found only 58 cars per day on Lakefield. Average speed was 21 miles an hour. Eighty-fifth percentile speed was 26, so I'm not really seeing a significant speeding problem there. That could be because of the traffic circle that was already installed. So we're not proposing any additional traffic calming unless people express interest in that. This is what the final product will look like. This is what it looked like in 1961 when they built it the first time, a brand-new concrete street with new driveways on either side. Here's the cost of both projects together. Pavement's $428,000, sanitary sewer $166,000, storm sewer $146,000, just a little bit of water main work adjusting some valves. Total cost $744,000. Here's how the project would be paid for. So the sanitary sewer comes out of the sanitary sewer fund, which is a citywide fee on everybody's water bill. The storm water, the storm sewer would come out of the storm water fund, which is also a citywide fee on your water bill. There are very little water utility work to be done. The general taxes are paying 36 percent. That's the taxes that everybody pays citywide. And then special assessments are paying $162,000 or 22 percent of the total. So here is a typical special assessment for a lot. The lots in Orchard Hills are quite large. So assuming a 75-foot lot, the assessment rate is $62.21 per foot. That comes to $4,665. Just about everybody out there has also a driveway, so that would be $7.77 per square foot in addition to this. But the bills would not be mailed out until March of 2021, not 2020, but March 21, 2021. At that point, you would have the payment option of paying a lump sum, or a five-year installment, or a 10-year installment plan with the 4 percent interest. Here's how it would look in 2021. You would pay $653 for the whole year. And if you had an escrow, that would come out to about $54 a month on your escrow. And then in the 10th year, it would be $485 for the whole year, and that would be about $40 a month on your escrow payment. Here's why the bills are a little bit bigger out in Orchard Hills. The residents actually get exactly what they pay for since they have larger lots. The larger lot sizes in Orchard Hills mean that, and they're actually twice what elsewhere in the city, you know, a typical lot elsewhere in the city is about 30 feet. These are about 75. So as a result, the city has to pay twice as much to pave it because we have to put in twice as much pavement, twice the length for the sewer, twice the length for the water main, twice the length for the street lighting. So in order to keep things fair and make sure that the people on the 30-foot lots aren't paying more than their fair share, and the people on the 75-foot lots aren't paying less than their fair share, we do assess based on the front footage. A lot of people in Orchard Hills previously paid for other streets, like 119th Street in 2016. So I just want to explain, a lot of these properties are being assessed on the longer side. This is not uncommon. There are about 10,000 parcels out of the almost 20,000 parcels in the city that do pay for more than one side of their property. So that's more than half, 55 percent. 3,400 parcels do pay for more than one street. And then there's about 7,900 parcels that pay for their street and their alley. So here's how we do a calculation if it's the longer side of your property, assuming it's about 120 feet long. The assessment rate's the same, $62. That comes to $7,465. But then we take 60 percent off the longer side, so we subtract $4,400, leaving it a cost of $2,900. So you do get a 60 percent off on the longer side if you have two streets that you're paying for. Why do we special assess? Well, we've for over 110 years, the city property owners have historically paid up to the entire cost of a street, 100 percent in the old days, because they alone were the ones that were enjoying this unique benefit from having this brand-new street, improving the curb appeal of their property. But like I said, on this project, the city will only collect $162,000, which is only 22 percent of the total cost. The assessment rate that I quoted, $62.21 per foot, is the same for all residential properties anywhere in the city, no matter how wide your street is, or how high the traffic volumes are, or how high the actual bid prices are. Everybody pays $62 per foot, so everyone is treated equally. For over 110 years, Wisconsin state law has allowed for special assessments, and there are at least 100 court cases that I'm familiar with where judges have upheld them as a fair and reasonable method to recoup the cost of these projects. So this method of recouping costs has been around for a long time. Another reason that we do special assessments is it's the only way to ensure that tax-exempt schools, churches, charities, hospitals, county parks, utilities, and railroads pay their fair share, too. No one is exempt from special assessments, even though there are 430 properties in the city that do not pay any property taxes. And many of these tax-exempt schools, churches, and hospitals, and county parks are very large properties that actually encompass about 28 percent of the total city's area. So they only contribute to cities at the city's cost through these special assessments. Likewise, businesses, corporations, manufacturers pay a higher assessment rate to ensure that they contribute their fair share because they have more traffic or truck traffic. So their assessment rates go from $77 to $93 per foot. This is a map that shows what I just was talking about. These are the 430 properties that are tax-exempt, the 28 percent of the city that is not paying taxes. So special assessments are often the only funds that we get from these properties. And this is a map of all the properties on the east end that have actually already paid special assessments in the past 10 years. Every place you see a color is a place where someone has paid a special assessment. So it's pretty universal. And of course, if you go back far enough, every single city, every single property in the city has paid at least once. A lot of times, they've paid twice, like you are here, or three times in many cases, too. So everyone is paying their fair share. Everyone is paying the same assessment. Why do we charge 4 percent interest? Well, the city borrows the funds for this project, so the city is paying interest to these municipal bondholders over the next 10 years. So the city is merely passing along these interest charges to the residents that choose the five- or 10-year plan. The city's not making a profit off of the interest that we're charging. There will be times where it will look like this, where they will be pouring new concrete, and you'll have to park on the side streets, 119th Street, or 122nd Street, or further down on Euclid. You'll be allowed to park on the side streets without a permit. The police are aware of this, so keep the patrols up. If you have a need of a disabled parking spot, or you have a sticker or license plate like this, we can accommodate you with signs like this on one of the side streets. So if you need something like that, let us know. We can make arrangements so that you can have a disabled parking spot. Like I said, we're going to keep traffic across Lakefield moving on 119th Street, though we're not going to take anything out that we did in 2016. Here is a very tentative schedule. It's tentative because I don't know exactly what the Waukesha Water Pipeline is happening, when that's happening, or when they're going to be coming through. There are people on the north side of Lakefield that are also going to have this pipeline going on in their backyard. I would like to avoid having those at the same time. So tentatively, we're looking at the city advertising for bids in March, opening the bids in April, council awarding it in April, and then maybe even beginning work as early as May if the weather cooperates. But that is also when this pipeline is supposed to start on Oklahoma. So as I find out, I don't think they have opened bids either, so they don't know who's doing the work. As we find out when that project is going, we will try and coordinate it with our project. But either way, all the work should be done by August before school starts again. If the contractor's not done, they do pay a performance bond to make sure that they will complete the work, and they would be assessed liquidated damages if they go past the deadline, once we definitively set that. I just want to make everyone aware that there is something called the Construction in Progress email that you can sign up for on our website, and we will send you out probably weekly, sometimes more frequently, updates on what's happening on the street and all the projects. It's the best way to find out what's happening. We will send a physical letter to announce the beginning of the project, but after that, this would be your best source of information on what's happening on a weekly basis. So with that, any comments or questions from the council or the citizens?
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Daniels. We'll start with questions from the Common Council members, if there are any. Okay, seeing none, are there any comments or questions from the members of the audience? If there are, we ask that you come up to the podium here, and please give us your name and address for our official record. And sign in.
My name is Sharon Sinkovic, and we live at 12011 West Lakefield. My question is, am I very clear that we are not putting sidewalks in at all?
That is correct.
There's no sidewalks to be put in at all?
Yep.
What about the curbs? I mean, are they going to be lowered higher, or are they exempted?
Well, they'll be very, very close to where they are now.
Okay. That was it.
Thank you.
Hi, excuse me, Alfred Summerall, 3108 South 119th, which is the house at 119th in Oklahoma that just butts into Lakefield. And I guess my question is, the estimate I got did not have any sort of a discount or anything attached. And so was there going to be a final? I mean, I'm not arguing that Lakefield doesn't need it. It clearly does. However, in the three years I've been in the house, I've literally probably walked or driven on that street one time. Because there's no sidewalk, there's no driveway, it's no benefit to me. So I guess two questions. One, will there be an actual final bill given? And two, what benefit does someone who really does not, I mean, that street, for all intents and purposes, does not exist to me. So what benefit do I get out of this for the figuring 60 percent of 33.59 is about, I don't know, $1,800, $2,000? What benefit do I get out of that?
Well, your estimate should be pretty close to the final bill.
Well, I'm going to argue with you right now because it's saying $62.21 at 54 feet, which that's probably about right if I'm just picturing in my head. And then you send me 33.59 and 34 cents. But then on your presentation, you're saying it's a 60 percent discount because we already paid for that whole part of 119th.
That was probably the long side of your property, 119th.
Correct, correct.
Right, so this is the short side. So you get, you only get the discount on one of the longer side.
Okay, so now we have a bigger issue. I'm paying $3,400 for a street I've literally used one time in the three years I've lived here. And that was only to park my car so I could go shovel my driveway. So where are we going with this?
Corner lots give you more opportunities. You have sewer. You can have storm sewer coming off of either side. You can have sanitary sewer.
Where does, at, my understanding is there is no benefit to me whatsoever for having to pay this.
You can configure your house or your sewer, or you have more options than other people.
I can't pick up my house and point it this way.
You could have your storm lateral come off of one street or the other. You have more options than somebody who doesn't.
I understand that. We have no flooding issues. We have no issues whatsoever. Everything is fine. This is not benefiting this property whatsoever. And yet, we get a bill for $3,400.
It is improving the look of your property, too.
Sir, I would respectfully disagree. It is not improving the look of our property.
That is, that's our policy. I'm sorry.
Any other questions from the members of the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close our first public hearing, and we will move on to public hearing number two. Mr. Clerk?
2019, 2020, Combination Class B Alcohol License for Jaeger's LLC, Marcus Gorsick, agent, DBA de bar for the premises located at 1900 South 60th Street, due on existing location in regard to exceeding the Combination Class B Alcohol License quota.
Mr. Brodt?
You're the one who wants this, right?
So I want to state that the city has a quota, actually two quotas. They have a statutory quota of 137 licenses.
Many times, right? We're finally doing this.
Pete, your microphone's still on.
The city has a statutory quota of 137 plus an additional 10 reserve licenses. For a different conversation later, remember that number. We have a local quota of 120 licenses to issue. Currently have 120 licenses issued, plus two additional licenses that are authorized to go over quota, and that would be the Lapham and the Reunion that came in before. Mr. Gorsick has applied for a license. He actually applied for a license. He came to the committee in October, was originally denied, came back to the committee in December, was approved to go forward with the public hearing, which we're having tonight. It's for a country in rock-style lounge, dance, and banquet hall. And I just wanted to mention that they are, have an existing special use permit that was approved in March of 2019.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Common Council on public hearing number two?
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Weigle.
I'm trying to remember. Have we seen his full business plan for this? I don't remember the banquet hall portion of this, I guess.
The letter that I pulled off of when he submitted for his petition did include that wording in there.
Okay, but we haven't seen an actual plan of operation, the formal application that we typically get, correct?
Correct. We should have it on file, though.
Okay. And so tonight's public hearing is to hear from the neighbors and the community about what they think about it. And are we expecting this to be acted on this evening in license and health?
That's totally up to the committee.
It's up to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Common Council? Alderman Shaplesky?
I'd just like to point out a couple of things. Number one is that, as most of you people know, we had a Betterbach demonstration there this last summer, where this organization came in and showed what the community could do with the area. And in talking with some of the staff on it, they felt that it's better to have, even though, even as a bar, it's better to have a bar than an empty building, especially an empty building that's been there for a long time. And in talking with a city attorney, and our new process for license is that this license goes with this person. If he lasts six months and goes under, license is gone. Doesn't go to the building. You know, anybody else that comes has to come to us and go through the same process that he had to. That's it.
Thank you. Alderman Barzak?
Mayor Devine, do you know the taxable value of the building currently?
I do not. Development-related issues. Steve Share is actually here. He could answer some questions regarding the development.
My question, and before, I would vote on it, or I'd want to know the taxable value right now, and I'd like to know the taxable value after, based on how much are they putting into this particular building? Like, for instance, with the Reunion and some of those, they put in a couple million dollars. The one on Lapham, they put in, you know, is this going to be an economic boom to that particular area that we need to go over quota? Because in the future, I mean, we have to start looking, just like we saw with the planning on Highway 100 tonight, we have to start looking at conserving some of these licenses because we have a lot of developments that are coming in over on 66th Street. And of course, the community center that possibly would be going in probably is going to have more than one license besides their license to operate. They're probably going to have a couple of sub, perhaps a brewery in there, perhaps a bar in there, perhaps a pizza place that serves. So there's going to be multiple licenses there, too. So I think we have to look carefully, tread softly on where these licenses are going over quota. I even, tonight, we also are considering giving up a license, which I'll comment on that when that comes up. But we're looking to go over quota, yet we're looking on giving licenses away, which kind of does not make sense to me, but we'll get into it later. But I would like to know the economic impact that this is going to have on that area, you know, with the taxes, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions? Alderman Vitale?
Yeah, the way, based on the issues of their establishment for the last, you know, 20, 25 years, of course, the last few tenants, it did occur some problem, just like many of the local bars in the past, you know. So the way I look at it, really, I drive by there, I stop by there, and I look at structure. Like I said before, it looks like if we keep it that way, it's going to be like a Second World War structures, a building, you know. I mean, so it doesn't really, improves the looks of the neighborhood. You know, I'm not saying that the tavern owner, I mean, the guy who's going to, if he gets the license, he will be, of course, he knows the consequences of the council. If anything comes up, I mean, he could lose the license within the six-month timeframe. So the way I look at it, you know, I'm not totally thrilled about it, but I would like to give the opportunities, you know, for a small businessman to go in that locations, you know. That's my district. I live with that, you know. I don't really know that person, you know, based on some records, you know. It seemed like it's a clean operator, you know. And so I base my decisions on his character, based on his reports, you know. So that's why I'm kind of in favor to see the location, to get something in that corner. So the value of the properties, you know, I mean, it could be 150, 200,000 perhaps, you know. But the bottom line is, either way, I don't care. But the question is, is to have somebody occupy that corner. So I hope it will be the best solution, that we approve the license. We're not adding any more license, what it is, to the bar owners. They turn in their two license based on reasons of cultures. So we're not really adding any more liquor license. So that's why I'm kind of going in favor to all of the gentlemen to do business on that corner. So we did a lot of things on Burnham Street this summer, tried to revive the areas, you know. So we've done many things. We've done a lot of things with Kegel, I mean, which is another issue here, you know, with the ice rink, to me, which is great for the community, is great for the neighborhood, for families could go there. So something has got to happen within, you know, Kegel's been there a long time. So this place on 60th and Burnham was there for many years. So it's been a bar there for many years. I did experience myself heartily facing problem with that place a few times. So I hope it don't happen again. But I like to give a person a possibility, you know, and I hope it works out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Alderman Barzak.
Just for clarity, Mr. Clerk Steve, if, what are the two licenses that Alderman Vitale referred to that were turned in? He said two licenses were turned in, so it wouldn't be over quota? He just made that comment?
I missed the names that he said.
Because then maybe we don't have to go over quota here, if there's two licenses that we're not aware of that were turned in?
No, that were not two recently.
Oh, because that's what he stated.
Talking about in the past.
All right, he stated there were two turned in.
Nope, not recently.
In the past.
Any other questions from the Common Council?
Mayor Devine?
Elder Person Ranky?
60th and Burnham. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this location has had a troubled past. We've had so many problems with the bars that have located here. What would be different if we granted this license? Every bar that has located in that particular location, we've had problems. I'm sorry, I just remembered that. And why would we promote giving another bar another license?
I guess I can try to answer that. Elder Person, like, the difference is it's a different operator, the same building owner, but a different operator of the business.
Well, each operator that has located there has promised to run a good bar, but that hasn't been the case.
I'm not debating that.
Just my observation, Mayor.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the elder persons? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions from the members of the audience?
I live in that area.
Can you give us your name and address, too, please?
Peggy Whitman, 700 South 56th Street. I live in that area, and I agree with the older woman, that every place that's gone in there has had problems. They can promise to heaven that they're not going to have problems. But they all do. Doesn't West Dallas have enough bars? I mean, we have one almost on every corner. And I don't see the need that we need another bar in this area. We have enough problems with drunk driving, hitting runs, and so I don't, we need another bar, honestly.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, we will close our second public hearing. We will move on to item E, citizen participation. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the council during this 30-minute period. We ask that you keep your comments to approximately five minutes, as we keep this portion of our agendas to a half an hour. five minutes, as we keep this portion of our agendas to a half an hour. We can't take action or debate the topics raised by the speakers, because they are not properly agendized, and would violate open meetings record or recordings, but we will listen, so does anybody wish to address the council under citizen participation this And again, we ask for your name and address.
Hi, I'm Tasha Cowep, I live at 1443 South 59th, and as a mom, I just wanted to thank the city for the recent partnership with local businesses to bring family-friendly activities to West Dallas. We live on 59th Street, and we love the ice rink, that's between Kegels and the public table, especially the event that was a few weeks ago, when they had the ice skating night during winter week, and we're hoping more things like that continue, especially in our neighborhood. So we are just wanting to speak in support of that area staying closed the way it is. In addition to the ice rink being fun for us, we've also noticed an improvement on the traffic in our area, we had a lot of people that used to use our block to avoid the stoplights on 60th, and I wouldn't let the kids play in the front yard previously, but now that that block has been closed, we don't see that anymore, it's really improved the traffic on our block, so we're excited about it for that reason as well, and the kids wanted to share a few things, too. Say your name and your address.
It's my name.
Here's your address. Say your name.
I am Nora Cupp, and I live at 1443 South 59th Street. And, um...
Okay, I'm sorry, I wanted to read my letter.
And I wanted to read my letter. Dear City Council, please keep the ice skating rink there, I really enjoy skating on it, and also people don't come speeding down my street. In addition, lots of other people love and use the rink, it is a good way to get people to eat at Kegels or public table. Also, Kegels has been really nice and helpful to us, they donated a gift card to our block party. In conclusion, I think you should really keep the ice skating rink, lots of people use it, and people don't come speeding down my street.
My name is Zach Cowep, and I like the idea of keeping the block, street blocked off, because people don't come speeding down 59th, and also, they have summer in the music that we, music in the summer that we can hear, so we can sit outside on our patio and listen to it, and also, ice skating there is very fun.
Thank you, thanks for your comments. Does anybody else wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? I know it's a tough act to follow. All right, we will close citizen participation, we will move on to item F, which will announce our standing committees, they will be meeting during recess, the room numbers are listed on page two of your agendas. Moving to item G, I don't have a, I don't have anything for the mayor's report this evening, item H would be elder person's reports, do we have any reports from the elder persons this evening?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Stefanski.
I just wanted to congratulate, I went to the West Dallas, Miss West Dallas Scholarship Pageant on Sunday evening at West Dallas Central High School, and I want to congratulate the two winners from Alyssa, let's see here, Alyssa Harmon won for the Miss West Dallas Outstanding Teen for 2020, and Miss West Dallas 2020, and I hope I don't bash her name too much, because it's very hard to pronounce, but it's Glow Konieksny, and she won Miss West Dallas 2020, and she also won Miss Congeniality as well, so I want to send out a congratulations to them both.
Any other reports from the elder persons?
Mr. Chair, can I just, can you email me those names, so I have the correct names?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman May.
First, I want to thank the, the individuals who were up here previously for, for getting involved in your government, and coming up and speaking, that really meant a lot to us, so thank you so much, nicely done. I want to thank the Rainbow Gardens Neighbor Association, this past weekend, no, it was two weekends ago now, hosted a forum for the five candidates for District III elder person, so I want to thank them for doing that, and remind everyone that next week, Tuesday, at, I believe it's 6:30 here at City Hall, the Youth Commission will be hosting a candidate forum for the District III older persons, candidates for elder person, so I hope people will show up or tune in on, online, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other elder persons' reports?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysik.
First of all, I'd like to thank Alderman May for live streaming that forum, you did an excellent job, it came through on Facebook very nicely, it was clear, you could hear every word the speakers were saying, were stating, and it was an excellent job, and I, you know, I know you didn't have to do that, and it was well, nice of you to do that. Secondly, I move for approval in the minutes of the common council meeting of January 21st, 2020.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by elder person Ranky, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item carries, item J will be, items not referred to committee, I'll ask for a motion to send items four through 11 to the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, License and Health Committee, Understanding Committee reports?
Mayor Devine, we will report those out after the recess meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysik.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meetings.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman Vitale, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are in recess.